We have a full press on call this meeting board. First, we have a public comments.
Yes, Beth Carson.
Okay. Ms. Carson, come on.
Gentlemen, members of the school board, Mr. Superintendent and guests. My name is Beth Carson and I am here to present money to the Stacy Carson, Jordan, and John Carson Memorial Scholarship. We had a basketball tournament, or baseball tournament on Saturday at the Sam Hall Complex and we were able to raise a thousand dollars to put into the scholarship fund. The scholarship fund, we hope to perpetuate and have some kind of fundraiser every year for this scholarship. We were very pleased at the hard work everyone provided for this scholarship and to make this money available for our some graduating senior. So, I have presented the money to the superintendent and see that it gets into the right funds. So, thank you very much and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Carson, thank you very much for your time and your efforts for working with those people to get that money and those kids really, really do appreciate it at graduation time and it is very, very helpful.
It's our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Chris Lindens. I think we get to break first.
Superintendent, members of the board, guests. I've come before you today because I, we moved here two years ago and I can tell you that from the bottom of my heart that Maude is something I've never experienced before, which is a town in which I'm actually, I feel proud to live in. The community members here are welcoming and are very friendly and I've got neighbors and I'm proud to call my neighbors. But one thing that's come to mind, especially with the commission election and things I've learned about the Maude School District, I've noticed that it's got an excellent tradition of athletics and even scholastics in the classroom sense. But having myself lived various places throughout the United States, I've experienced some things that aren't necessarily available in this area and are available in the state of Texas but aren't necessarily utilized here that I think would benefit the students at large. These are academic extracurricular activities. The primary ones that I'm proponent of are UIL, speech and debate, academic decathlon, and junior statesman of America. All of these bring additional skills for the students to utilize, to use later on in life. In the case of speech and debate, you learn how to research, formulate thought, learn how to present well-educated arguments. In junior statesman of America, you learn some of that and then you also are able to become a very civic-minded individual and know how the government works and how to participate in that. And then finally, in the case of academic decathlon, you have a competition where those who may not be athletically inclined or have a talent such as music or drama, to go in and learn lots of information across a number of subjects and give them the opportunity to have fun and learn how to think and act under pressure and be able to perform in a way that they can be rewarded and give them a lot of positive feedback. So, what I'm here today as a simple public comment is if the board were willing, I would like to maybe do something similar to an exploratory examination of the possibility of introducing those to Maude and giving those academic extracurricular activities to the students to see if they'd be interested and then also help in any way I can to help procure funding for that. And I think that would be a benefit to the school and to the community. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say in the public comment section and I appreciate you guys hearing me on.
Any other public comments?
Mr. Ward, Becky, special questions.
I come before y'all today, Mr. P, the school board members, guests. It's my understanding now that, it was my understanding before when I submitted a memo to y'all that Randy Hamilton had resigned and I'm by understanding now that he drew his resignation. So, my thing was going to be to ask for consideration for that place if it was, if he did resign and also request a special election if, you know, multiple people, you know, signed up to be considered for that place. That's all I had.
Any others?
No, sir.
Okay. Appreciate those public comments. This board really appreciates the turnout we've seen tonight. Appreciate the community that cares about our school. Appreciate you being here very much. Next item on the agenda is communications.
Yes, Van, United Methodist Church sent Maude I C a letter thanking them for their donations, both in material items to Van, Texas. We sent two hundred dollars in relief items to the folks that were affected by the tornado as well as almost three hundred dollars of the schools raised by that community. Van Methodist Church became the center for organization for relief in the community and we received a thank you from Reverend McElhenne. So, thank you for Mr. Hedges, thank you for the kids that went down there, thank you for the folks. We had some coaches and some kids and some administrators, Coach Sanders was down there as well, people in need and we had some kids and some folks step up, so I do appreciate that.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the May 22, 2015 regular meeting of the board and the monthly financial report. We need to pull from the consent agenda the checks for alimony, building supply, they will be voted on in a separate action, other than that, Mr. any other items that anyone needs to pull from consent agenda.
What is that, one correction to the minutes or talking on the list unless she won't get it straight?
Okay.
Question. Question to the minutes, about halfway down to everybody on the May 27. Have a chair in the chair, just remove the chair and second that.
Okay.
Was the, oh, I'm on the side of the conversation.
I have one comment I'd like to say about pulling that to the alimony voices. That's, that's at my insistence, everyone knows that's a big deal for me and I don't want, I hope that's not a problem.
No, it's legal.
Okay.
Be entirely appropriate.
Okay, I just, you know, I need to abstain from anything that's, you know, I don't want to cause anybody any trouble, so that's why we're doing it that way. And go on, we talked about that, are we okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Do we have a motion to see consent agenda items other than the checks for alimony?
I'd like a motion, I'm going to bring the consent agenda.
I, I'll say. A motion is second, all in favor, when you do. Pass as you notice. Secondly, we'll take a motion to accept the items that were pulled from the consent agenda with the checks to alimony supply. We have a motion that those can approve?
I'll make a motion, I'm going to bring the check for alimony supply.
I'll say. A motion in the second, all in favor? All opposed?
All in saying.
One extension, other, let's hear yours. At this time, if it's okay with the board, I would like to move items six and seven to the next item on the agenda. Any objections to that? Done here. There's an elephant in the room, just want to go ahead and get it removed. On June the ninth, we received a resignation letter from Randy Hamilton, a well-written letter with the reasons why he was resigning. On June 15th, we accepted a rescension of that letter. The trustee that submits a resignation has eight days or till the board admits or accepts that resignation to rescind and it has been rescinded, so essentially items six and seven are no longer necessary. No action needs to be taken. Done here. So we can dispense of items six and seven on the agenda. Anyone on the board have any questions, comments? Okay, everybody satisfied? Okay, we move on to item eight, review and discuss assessments.
Okay, on the screen you can see our, over to the right you'll see Maude and also the state. We also have got some other scores from local school districts around, just for your information to kind of see where everybody was at on our recent star results.
Amanda, wait a second, can we do something alongside, can we do it right there? Thank you.
Want one more?
Much better.
Is that good enough? You'll see on here we do not have math scores listed, the state, there are new math tests this year and the test, they have not actually set the standard yet for the passing for math. That will not be until the end of the summer. So, once they have actually set the passing standards, then we will get student actual results on what they scored on the math. So, as of, right now, we only have the reading, writing, science, and then our high school, none of that has changed. So I'm just going to go through this quickly with you, just to give you a little breakdown on how we did this year. Third grade reading, we had ninety-seven percent that passed and the state was at seventy-seven And one thing I will say before we go through all of this, this is our first year, in the past we have had actually three types of test. We've had the star test, we have had star modified, which was tests where our special education students were taking, and then we had a star alternate test, which is for the really severe special ed students. They did away with the star modified this year and they replaced it with a star A. Some of the, we did not have very many students who took that test. We chose to try and put our kids on the rigorous test as we could because we are trying to give them best instruction they can have. Some of the thoughts, some of the after the test, I will say we got a thing that said the star A, we're not going to count this year in our results because of the fact it's a new test. So, looking back, you know, some of the schools who did have students on the star A, which was for our special education students, you know, their, their results were not in this. So it's kind of, you're not really comparing apples and apples because, you know, we, we did have all of our students that took this test this year. But again, third grade reading, we had ninety-seven percent and the state was at seventy-seven percent and you can kind of see across there some of the other local school districts. Fourth grade reading, we had again ninety-seven percent and the state was at seventy-four percent. Fourth grade writing, we were at fifty-three percent and the state was at seventy percent. Fifth grade science, we were at eighty-three percent, the state was at seventy-two percent. Fifth grade reading, we were at ninety-two percent, the state was at seventy-two percent. Sixth grade reading, we had eighty-one percent, the state had seventy-six percent. Seventh grade reading, we were at seventy-nine percent, state was at seventy-five percent. Seventh grade writing, we were at eighty-one percent, state was at seventy-two. Eighth grade reading, we were at eighty-nine, state was at seventy-eight. Eighth grade science, we were at fifty-three, the state was at seventy. Eighth grade social studies, we were at forty, the state was at sixty-four. Algebra one, we had seventy-four percent, the state was at thirty-one percent that passed the algebra one. Biology, we were at ninety-one percent, the state was at forty-four percent. English one, we were at seventy-four percent, the state was at fifty-two percent. English two, we were at seventy-nine percent, the state was at forty-four. And US history, we were at ninety and the state was at fifty-six. So, we have looked at our scores, there's some of the scores that we, we know we do have some improvement to do. We have met and we've come up with kind of a game plan as what our plans are for next year. Hopefully those areas will improve. I think overall, I think our students did really, really did well. Being a newer test, it is very difficult, it is a hard test. I was very pleased overall with how our students did. Does anybody have any questions to me?
You said that our special ed is in this?
They are, I counted them out.
Yes.
That's pretty good.
Reading numbers, the first two categories, can I ask who teaches third and fourth grade reading?
Laura Bowlic teaches third grade reading.
Pardon me?
Laura Bowlic and Monica Frost teaches fourth grade reading.
Those would be some of the best in the, in the region.
That's impressive.
One of the things about it is we've got, we've got several areas that we know we've got to work on, but as a whole, if you look at the, we're basically looking at the eastern side of region eight in comparable sized schools. We were, I think we took, look, there's sixteen tests that were given, we were in the top four, five, and nine of those tests, so we felt like that we did some really good things. We've got some areas that we, like everybody, that we have to address, but we feel like that we did some really good things this year. Our kids worked extremely hard, our staff worked extremely hard to try to get performance up in those areas and we did a great job.
More questions?
Thank you.
And Ms. Sanders will hold for some of the things that we're doing is remediation pieces and some tutorial pieces that we do for the kids in this area.
Would you next go, item five, current status of 2015, 2016 budget?
One of the things that we've looked at is with our, with our current budget, we have, we've worked diligently to try to get us at the end of the year where we are on track with our budgetary items. Throughout the year, due to some, we had lost enrollment throughout the year and essentially we've been playing catch-up a little bit, just trying to make up the dollars through our ADA. And essentially, we're not through with the budget year in and of itself, but we have gained significant ground to getting where we need to be. If you look at the back page on that, that bottom number is essentially where we're at at this point. We've done a number of different things to try to generate some additional revenue and just potentially reduce some costs in the second semester to try to make up.
What is the item is the fifteen, sixteen update on the budget process.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was going over last year's. But anyway, we'll go over that one. Where we are at this point is we've, to build fifteen, sixteen's budget, one of the things that we've got to look at is the, the taking action on the personnel piece of teacher salary. The state has actually come in and raised the minimum salary for teachers and that is going to be a big part of what we put on our budget on. We did look like we generated a little additional revenue through the process of this legislative session, but through the process of step and the raising of the minimum, that gave us some additional dollars, but that accounted for a lot of those dollars as well. So, we think it's going to be a good thing for our staff that they certainly will get some much deserved increases based on those. Anything I'm leading up?
Normally, we would actually have a rough budget or a lot of years we have a rough budget at this time, but the problem is when the legislative session ends, you have such a short period of time when it is a legislative year. So, in addition, we're a little concerned because our federal money, we normally get in May, we got this Monday, yesterday, but we can't establish our current budget until we get our federal money. I don't know what the holdup was, but it was in line with what we've been getting on the anticipate we need to cut or didn't understand why they would be holding it. So anyway, we've had just several issues that were waiting on the state and, basically we got that last week, so all the salary schedules that we had built, basically were thrown out the window because everything changes, so we're kind of back to square one on our budget.
Are you dressing at the next meeting?
Down to our last couple hires, which will, which will make our budget fairly accurate at this point, so we've got a pretty good idea.
Just to bring me up to speed, next month we'll look at a preliminary budget and then we go.
Yes, we actually have to vote on it in August, but that's more the formality, y'all already looked at it in July in depth.
Everybody satisfied? All right, next item is the, item number nine, consider and take action on amendment of 2015, 2016 Maude, you can benefit as well as your teacher salaries schedule.
The adjustment is essentially, we would like to propose, we've got the additional raises to the scale, that give, they presented us with an additional scale that has additional dollars built in, it raised the minimum to around thirty thousand dollars, we were a bit under that. But what we have been in is we have been state minimum plus fifteen hundred dollars plus four percent. We would like to propose for the, for the sake of, for the sake of really, for ease of calculation, is just to raise that to twenty-five hundred dollars above the state minimum and create a salary schedule that is essential as follows that model moving forward. But we, we run it both ways and twenty-five hundred dollars would, would actually be a little bit larger increase, but, but would be a much easier way of factoring in salary for us.
Is that twenty-five hundred without the four percent?
It would be without the four percent, correct.
What's the advantage in changing? What am I missing here? I mean, you're going to have to wait while I catch up, but I understand that you want to change it.
Do you?
Yeah, go.
One thing, we're the only school that does four percent, so when people that are prospective hires ask to see our salary schedule, they have a hard time understanding.
Apples to apples, what four percent is.
Yes, it's like we have to go back and explain, well, somewhere along the line, we, we gave an increase of four percent. But most districts either pay the state then and that's it, but most of them around here pay the twenty-five hundred above state then. Some pay, like the cap pays four thousand above state then.
That's your twenty-five hundred yearly? Okay, so this then makes us competitive with?
Yes, and easier to understand as far as dollars, I did just several different steps and doing it way with four percent and giving it twenty-five hundred actually gives a couple of hundred dollars a year more.
Okay, so it is advantageous then? Everybody need a motion on this item?
Yes.
Mr. P, could I ask a question? What would be? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but during the board meeting, public comment section was closed. Apologize. You have to keep your cool. Thank you.
I might get a call.
All right, we have a second.
I'll say.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor, is your idea? Pass as you notice.
And that will allow us to create the budget, the majority of our budget is spent on salary with personnel, so for next time that will allow us to recalculate those based on the state minimum and the twenty-five hundred dollars, so that will allow us to generate that report.
Does that, does that go, I guess I should ask, does that go each year?
Do we revisit this annually?
No, that would be policy. So state men will be always what state men is and when they adjust state men, we will adjust accordingly, but then we would be twenty-five hundred above that.
Right.
Plus years or seasons?
It would be years, it's not rotating, yes.
The teacher question. Have that approved? We're ten, superintendent for.
All right, within that, principals, would y'all like to go ahead and give a vote? I didn't know it was going to be on the occasion or not, so I put it under mine, but they're both here, so.
We finally finished up the year and we finished out strong. Of course, the last, the last month in high school and junior high is extremely busy because we're at sports playoffs and trying to get through EFCs and graduations. The other graduations, they were very nice and efficient, the kids looked nice, went smooth. I've had several comments and we livestreamed it this year, so that's something new for us and we got some friends at larger schools that watched that livestream and they were impressed with our graduation and the fact that we could do that for free. So, they've, we're seeing over steam now, it's how do you do that? We, Ms. Harold and Ms. Sanders are worth, they've got final transcripts all filed and permanent files for all the graduates and they've all been sent out to their respective colleges. We've got the master's schedule for next year roughed out and starting to fill student schedules out. Of course, every time we start that, we find the king and we have to start over. One of the people that are up for hire tonight, I'm excited about getting her because she was an adjunct professor at Coastal Dean College in South Texas and by bringing her in, not only will we teach our normal science classes, we will get to teach dual credit biology and we've had ten kids sign up for that dual credit biology right there. For the couple of kids that failed the ELC tutorials, they're coming four hours a week per subject for the next three weeks and we retest July sixth through the ninth. So, they're, they're getting work put in right now, we've got teachers up here that are drilling them and trying to cover, they broke it down to the specific areas they missed the most on and they're going back over those and reteaching. Short and bragging, our kids, Katie Jennings, Van McCroskey attended the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Academy at UNT this past week. We also had Alyssa Carr who attended last year. They asked her to come back and be an accountant's worth this year, so we got ten, three kids up there. We had two students, Trent Mann and Tim Carr, that have to represent Maude this past weekend in the FCA Party Champions Bowl. And then our varsity cheerleaders just got back from TCU Cheer Camp, they received most approved squad, the Stutz Safe Award, they receive district stick every night at their camp. Plus, we have three All-American nominees and we have ten students that are volunteering in retirement wadley this summer. And we have 10 students that are volunteering in retirement widely this summer. I think that's a great thing. They're starting to come around and realize we talk more and more about being service-oriented and it's not always got money. And last year, I think we had four, this year we have 10. FFA goes to leadership camp, they're leaving tomorrow and then again in July, they'll begin the state conference down in Corpus. And then in August, we're going to host our first annual carbon camp and that'll be for incoming sixth graders. Seems like when they get their schedules on the night of meet the teacher night, they're so frazzled and worn out from changing buildings and not knowing where to go that we're going to do a little something extra. We're going to bring them up for about an hour, hour and a half, have their teachers here, they'll be able to walk their schedule, find their locker. We'll go over policies and procedures with them separate from everybody else, go over dress code, all the rules that are, because things change a lot when you go to secondary campus from the elementary campus. And then we'll feed them hot dogs before they leave and give the parents a chance to ask questions and go ahead and fill out paperwork and so that's about 40 kids and we get the paperwork knocked out on that day. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. I do have one thing. This dual credit biology, is that, it's been a little ago, does this cross, does Chief teach dual credit?
Algebra.
Algebra. So, we're going to have two of these in place.
Right. We offer 24 hours of dual credit classes. But the more teachers we can get to teach it, they get hands-on instruction versus, if we don't have a teacher, a qualified teacher, it's strictly online. And, you know, we'd rather than make sure they get an in-depth instruction, you get a lot more instruction in person.
Well, as I remember, last month, we hadn't had the algebra part before, right?
We had dual credit algebra, but it was strictly online.
Right. So, we're going to have a smooth capability. Right. This is the same thing, only different subject.
So, we'll get high school credit and the R and three hours of biology credit, or college credit at the same time.
Okay, great.
So, this makes 24, last month was 23, was that correct?
Forty.
But we all, we have biologists, we do biology.
They do biology, but it's all online.
Okay, okay, so we still offer it, we just add a teacher now.
We essentially can offer two semesters of college graduate.
All right, what I have here for you, talked about a little bit with elementary, is just some of the TPR testing. And we've kind of talked about it throughout the year, but it's got basically the year at a glance on here, so we can see where we started, where we're at the middle of the year and then where we're at the end of the year. So, we test three different times, beginning, middle, and end, and it kind of gives you an idea of how we're progressing through the year. So, this first page here, just looking at kindergarten, see the beginning of the year, they were with the rhyming words and that's basically, it gets harder as the year goes along. So, at the beginning of the year, they might see the word cat, they may cover up the C and then have them tell you what another word that rhymes with that is. And then as it progresses through the year, that gets increasingly harder and harder. But if you notice at the end there, we had 37 out of 38 students that were able to master that skill. The next column there, letter name identification, that's basically just knowing the alphabet, being able to recite the alphabet, being able to see a flash card of a letter and a call of a letter. And then by the end of the year, we're at 38 out of 38. So, we started the year, 10 of the students were not able to master that concept. The very last one with kindergarten is comprehension questions. This was all listening, so they would be read a story and then have to answer questions about the story afterwards. So, we improved on that, not as much as some of the other categories, but we were still at the end, we're 33 out of 38, so only five students weren't able to master that skill. With the kindergarten, there was one student who was retained by parent request. They agreed that there, well, there was some, there was just some discussion with the teacher, with parent, and all the parties agreed that it was in that child's best interest to be retained. So, that would definitely be one of the students that didn't master some of those skills. Any questions on that first page with kindergarten? All right, this next page here, it breaks down the first, second, and third grade. We do the TPR testing K through 3. It's a little bit different as they get older, some of the criteria changes a little bit. Obviously, it's tested more in depth. But this first category here, the reading accuracy, and that's basically just reading words correctly. So, if you look on the chart, you have different categories, one instructional, one independent. The independent means that they're reading above grade level, so they're reading without any help, do not need any instruction from the teachers. On the instructional level, that means that they are reading on grade level with the help of their teachers. So, that's what we're shooting for is to make sure that we have everyone who is either instructional or independent. On the breakdown there, if you look at the beginning of the year, the first graders, when they were tested the first time, they came into first grade, four out of 39 were where we needed them to be. So, they came in not very high. Whenever you look at the end of the year, it jumps up to 20 out of 38, we're on that level. Now, they, we take these numbers, Ms. Dickens and Ms. Murray, they take this information straight off the TPR test and then they have a response intervention, RTI, to where they are taking this data and directly pulling those students and bringing them in for extra reading help. So, a lot of these numbers that are going up, they got hold of these kiddos early in the year, were able to give them a lot of good instruction. Also, talking about there in the first grade, there were four different students that were identified as having dyslexia in the first grade late in the year. So, we kind of went through the year and by the time we figured out that there were some other issues going on, that has a lot to do with some of those numbers as well. And then you can see second, third grade, some of those numbers get really good. Obviously, with the third grade reading results that we saw on the, on the SAR test, 97%. At the end of the year, we had 30 out of 30 students that were on grade level or above grade level, so that's a direct correlation to some of the testing. Second chart there, reading fluency, words per minute, and that's just being able to call the words. This is actually probably the least important part of the TPR testing because we're a whole lot more concerned with the comprehension of what they're reading than how fast they're reading. Also, as the teachers are teaching them to read with punctuality and the punctuation and with expression, they're naturally going to slow down, but that's needed for them to comprehend a lot of the things that they're reading. So, the test, it doesn't really account for them slowing down and using all the punctuation and different things. So, some of the words per minute there, those numbers aren't exactly, you know, what the test indicates that they should be. Looking at, if you look over at the third grade and then you look down at the very bottom on comprehension, we only had, by the end of the year, the state says that those students should be reading 120 words per minute. And that's pretty difficult for our third grade to do. But if you look down at the comprehension, we're down at 24 out of 30 comprehended what they read. So, again, that is the more important part of what we're looking at is the comprehension. Down on the very bottom, on the bottom of the chart, and talking about the reading comprehension, one of the things in first and second grade, there's a lot of learning how to read, teaching the kids how to read. So, there's a big difference in first and second grade of teaching them how to read and then in third grade, they're actually reading to learn things. So, whenever you start talking about the difference in that and the different styles of things that they're required to read, those difficulty levels go way up. As far as retention in the, retention in the other grades, in first grade, we had one parent request, student that were having some family difficulties and issues and they thought it was best for the student to be retained. So, we honored their request and then there was one student in first grade who had come to us from another state and she had missed 50 days and then was not enrolled in any school district for 14 days. So, a total of 64 instructional days and she was completely out of first grade. So, talking with their family, they also agreed that it was in her best interest to reget first grade. And then we had one second grader that will be retained, student's academic failure and not being able to pass the courses in second grade.
Scott, first time I've ever seen these, in general terms, how does this compare to last year?
Well, I don't, I have not looked at last year's. I'm just getting my feet wet on all the TPR stuff and getting it figured out, so I'm looking at that and we will, that's something I can definitely report back when the next meeting and we can see how it compares.
All groups of kids are different. I mean, there's, you know, when you look at it, it's hard to compare year to year because it's different groups of kids, but what you're hoping to see is last year's first grade making some progress through the second grade so you can measure improvement. And that's really your end goal, a measure of over those first three years of gaining an understanding of what they do well and what they struggle with. They do an excellent job. I mean, the reading scores showed you in the elementary that they do an excellent job identifying kids that are struggling and working to meet those needs as they come.
One thing that we look at on that too is, I mean, we've got three different grades on the sheet, but realistically, we're looking at where was that class at the beginning of the year and where were they at the beginning of the year. Each class is going to have different dynamics and.
Sure, you're looking at relative progress.
Sure, sure. So, it's the same students beginning to end of the year, you know, in first grade, how did they do, the same students in third grade, how did they do?
Then that's. Thanks, Scott.
Athletic director was unable to be here.
He is loading up his items. He's moved to Maui. His wife made sure that he was there to help, so he is heading back and he will be within the city limits, I believe, tomorrow or the next day. He asked me to fast along with you. You received some pictures of some equipment that they have been saving for and they've done several powerlifting meets and this was the end result of doing those. The Booster Club helped them purchase the additional weight equipment. If you haven't seen it, it looks wonderful. They've done a great job. The intent of buying the additional weight equipment was to move kids in and out, more kids in and out in the same amount of time. He also said, you know, they're in the second week of workouts, between the boys and the girls, they're averaging between 60 and 80 students a day. He said the kids are working extremely hard. Workouts are Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. So, imagine getting 60 to 80 teenagers to get up before 8:00 in the morning and attend every single day. That's quite an accomplishment. Yeah, you've been, I noticed you've been dropping one off too. They've had multiple camps going this summer. They've got summer leagues going for both boys and girls and they've been doing seven on seven for football over in New Boston. So, they've been quite busy, lots and lots and lots of kids involved, so it's been a good summer so far. Yeah, the next item on there is school board training. I talked to Mr. Parker and he gave me a set of dates. If we can, at the end of the meeting, maybe sit down and see what our calendars will do. I know everybody's looking at vacations and whatnot. He gave me six days for the first meeting, that's going to be the legislative update. That's going to be pretty important that we get that information in. And then two other days, three days available and then the last one would be the end of August, there'd be two days available. So, if we could look at those prior to leaving, see what your calendar's hold and see when you can be available for those. We can set those mornings, we can set those in evenings. That's strictly, he is available and he will be here to meet our needs and that will take care of the majority of your training hours.
Is that for the new?
New board members will have some additionals, but.
Will that bring us up to speed for our meeting?
No, you'll still have it if I bring one to your meeting. I have to check, but I believe that's correct. Task B, day 102, I gave you that last month. I thought we were going to have quite a full meeting tonight, so I, we'll go over that one next month. You've got the notes on that, so please bear with me as we go through that. Student engagement. Ms. Sanders held a meeting and I believe we've got some people that were involved with it in the audience, the student engagement piece. But one of the things that we wanted to do, and I enclosed a copy of in your board report is each year, the state asks us to provide a look of what we do and the things that we do communicate, you know, really, really the things that we're doing here on our campus. It's, should be in the back. It's a list, it's filed up under.
Starts with fine arts at the top.
Did you get it? Okay. Yeah, it should be there, put it up last. One of the things that we discovered in going through it, I want to see, go ahead.
You're doing my.
No, no, you're doing my. Go ahead.
But we met with our DEIC committee this, right before the school was out. One of the things that we realized, because our committee is made up of elementary teachers, middle school, high school teachers, and then also some community members. And we had some elementary teachers that, as we started talking about this, they said, you know, we know what goes on on our side of the world, but we really don't know what a lot that goes on on the middle school, high school end because they're, you know, they're always over here. And they were interested in the things that we talked about to know what all was going on. We also had a community member that, you know, mentioned that, you know, he had a child that was involved in, you know, a certain activity, so he knew a lot about that activity, but if you're, you don't have someone involved in these other things, then sometimes you don't know what all the school is doing. So, with that being said, I'm going to go over what the committee came up with. There's different areas that the school, we write ourselves on. And so, our committee came up with things throughout the year that we have done in these certain areas. One of the, first was fine arts. So, this year in fine arts, we offered a seventh and eighth grade theater class. We had an eighth grade one-act play, which placed first place. We had five out of seven Superlative Awards at UIL. We also have a high school one-act play. They did a drama and dessert night where they had five plays that were given by the junior high and high school students. We offer a high school band, a fifth, sixth, and seventh grade band. We had two seniors that were awarded band scholarship, four students who attended the state honor band. We had a student who was an art exhibit finalist. We offered fine arts in the fifth grade. We also have a full design class. So, those were a few of the things that we did this year with the fine arts. And this is a program in our school that has really taken off. Kudos to Mandy Brower. If you've seen her out, definitely say something to her how well she has done. This next year, we are going to offer, she, that's her holiday next year, is going to be art and theater because we've had so many kids with an interest in that. So, we're going to offer two theater classes in high school, two theater, two art classes in high school, and a seventh, eighth grade theater and a sixth grade art. So, we've had so much interest in that area that is definitely contributes to her. She really has done a great job with that. Our next area was wellness and PE. We offer PE and athletic classes, pre, 10th, and 12th does some type of athletic or PE. We do a fitness program that's done once a year, it's required by the state. We have a sixth grade health class. We have nutrition guidelines that we are following by the cafeteria. We have a base program that we do in the fifth grade. Some of you may know it as DARE. It used to be called DARE, it's changed to BASE. They learn some pretty neat things in that program. We've had some guest speakers come and talk to us. We've had a drug-free rally. We, this year, we had a seventh through 12th grade went through a CPR class to learn CPR. We, this year, we had a seventh through twelfth grade, went through a CPR class to learn CPR. We have offered blood drives on campus, flu shots. And then also, we have our sixth through twelve athletic students. We provide them a free physical every year. So those are some of the things that we have done through the wellness and the PE. Under our community and parental involvement, we have meeting teacher night. We have parent meetings with your eighth, ninth, and twelfth grade students that Ms. Harold does. We have a newsletter, Facebook, Twitter. This year, we started the One Call system. This is a system where if we're going to be out of school, or if there's a, any type of message that needs to go out, if you hear a "howdy" at the meeting, everyone knows that is a "howdy" message. That is Mr. Hedges letting us know what we're needing to know. We have open house. We have booster clubs. We do the St. Jude's Bicafon. We had students that participated in the Race for the Cure. We delivered the water to the van after the tornado. We have the recognition of the student and staff of the month. Parent portals where students can, our parents can check their students' grades. Remind is a phone alert that some teachers use, send out a reminder of this homework student, you got a test tomorrow. As a parent, it's very nice to have that. Kids don't always come home and tell you what you need to know. Teachers have emails, teachers also have web pages, and we have a school website. So those are a few of the things that we have had under our community and parental involvement. Also, the next one is 21st century workforce. We have military recruiters that come on campus. The seniors attended two job fairs. Our eighth graders attended a career fair. Our seniors are allowed two college days, and our juniors are allowed one. We offer dual credit classes, kind of talked about that a little bit earlier. Something that started this year, last year, was our new senior class last year. This has been one of the most successful things, I think, we've had. This is where every senior is in a class where they get help with filling out scholarships, resumes, interview skills. They do a mock interview where they have to dress, they kind of sit in front of the panel, and they ask them questions, trying to help them get comfortable with what an interview is like. I think that has really been very beneficial for our seniors. We have a FASFAN night. This is where TC comes out and helps with financial aid. We have some students who do jaw shadowing. They're interested in a certain field. We allow them to go and watch that person in that job. We've had community speakers that have come and talked about different degrees and careers. We have a career program that we've done at elementary. Our sixth and seventh graders are in a career class. We've started an ACT prep class, where students can take that to get help with increasing their ACT score. We have our students that take ONET, it's an online career interest inventory. They take this in eighth grade, kind of tells them what they're interested in, so that when they start signing up for their high school classes, they kind of know what area they need to go towards. We have students that volunteer widely. Ms. Harold started Club Scrum this year, and also hands-on healthcare. Students that are interested in the medical field, kind of bring people in, show them different things about the medical field. We offer a culinary art certificate, welding certificate, serve safe, which is kind of restaurant certificate, and then we do an OSHA certificate. So those are some of the things that fall under our workforce for our students. We also have digital learning environments, that's the next one. We have smart boards in every class. We have two-hundred-and-twenty-five Chromebooks, wireless internet. We have a sixth and eighth grade technology applications class, elementary computer classes. We have started a robotics program. We're at Google Arts for Education District, where each student has their own Google email address. We are, we are starting online student registration. This is going to be something that's new, and for a parent that's got five kids, and you have to fill out that same packet over and over and over and over, it's really going to be nice, because I only opted one time this year, so I'm really excited about that. Our photography class did a photo booth this year at prom. We have a digital arts class, we have six computer labs, the parent portal again to check grades, and then the phone alert. The next one is our dropout prevention. We have pull-out teacher, Ms. Dickens, Ms. Goza, Ms. Murray, and Mr. Jones, they all do pull-out tutoring for kids that are struggling. We offer an Algebra I and Geometry labs. We offer Odyssey software. This is for if a student moves in and they're behind on credits, or they were in a class and we don't actually offer that class, we provide them an Odyssey software where they can get caught up. We also use that for summer school. If a student has failed and they're trying to regain credit, they can use the Odyssey software. We have after-school tutoring. We have Saturday school. We have tutoring classes for students who did not pass the STAR, the EFC. One of the things I think that is a big help of our, for our dropout prevention, is we have a lot of students who are involved in extracurricular activities. That is something that pretty much, if kids are, have some reason they want to come to school, that's a good thing to get them here. We have thirty-minute tutorials during lunch. And we have also some students who have attended HOE and MASH, it's a leadership camp. I actually think maybe Alyssa Carr is there right now. So that's a, it's a good program for students to go to for leadership. And the last one is educational programs for GT. We have a pull-out program, the Ms. Brower and Ms. Johnston, they do that. We had a field trip recently, they made carts. The elementary has a program, every Friday, they do, it's a CIM, kind of an enrichment, trying to get things that kids are involved in, that they enjoy doing, that would be fun. Again, we have the dual-credit classes, robotics, we have club organizations, and, you know, the HOE and the MASH kind of falls under that also. So that just kind of gives you a little bit of what our committee came up with, with some of the things that our school did also this year. I think we were, after we left, you know, you don't, until you really sit down and you write it all down, you don't, it doesn't make you think of the things you're doing. It's just something we do it every year, and so it was kind of neat to sit down and actually look at what we've done, and we've had a lot of kids that had a lot of accomplishments this year, so.
One of the neat things, I just returned from the grid, which was the Region Eight Superintendent Conference, is they, some surrounding districts, we're discussing some of the programs that they're offering, that have been very positive for their districts. And one of the things that was very encouraging is we're on the right line with some of the districts in the region, and are actually doing some things that we were able to share with them. So we were able to give a few things that I brought back, that will hopefully be some things that we can help with, and I think that we were able to kind of show that we're doing some things and moving in the right direction, and offer some, you know, outstanding opportunities for our kids. So I'm extremely proud of the things that we accomplished. Those didn't just happen by themselves. To get those accomplished, so. Oh, summer maintenance, I'm sorry. One of the things that we've got to look at for summer maintenance, one of the things that I've got on here is we have a air conditioning unit in the junior high building that's going to need to be replaced. We're receiving bids on changing up the cafeteria ceiling, is in some need of repair, and we're getting bids on repairs for the onages around campus. We've got several that are, the elementary one in particular, as you're walking in the front door, is, it leaks pretty good. As you're going in that door on a rainy day, you kind of have to dodge some of the leaks. So we've had some folks coming out to give us some repairs on those. We've got an allocated budget for summer maintenance, and we certainly will stay within those, but those are the primary things we're looking at to replace this summer.
Last time with Superintendent, what I actually presented is Junior Achievement, it'll be twelve programs, I'm a few on the board. Are you familiar with Junior Achievement, Texture Cannon, and what it does? I was not. Received a phone call at my office this week from the latest executive director for Junior Achievement, Texture Cannon, and she approached me not as a school board member, but as a member of the finance, as a possible volunteer, but I've got, take interest as a school board member. But Junior Achievement does, they're a nonprofit organization. They're involved with several school districts in the area, TISD, Redneck, there's four that are currently involved with, negotiating with Texture Cannon, Arkansas, a possible international, and one other school. What they do is in the lower grades, it's primarily entrepreneurship they teach, so they would have volunteers come in and talk to the students about being an entrepreneur, get kids to thinking about the different things they can do when they grow up, what different people do, just to get them excited about why they go to schools and things that are available. Then in the seventh and eighth grade level particularly, they talk more about finance, how to balance a checkbook, investment, stocks, bonds, things like that, to try to prepare them for the financial life if they want to go outside. And I'm aware that we already have some excellent, not classes in this, but some classes that touch on some of this. I thought it was a great program to consider, and I wanted just to present it to the board to have some information I can hand out to each board member or paint it off about it. If it's something that you think you have interest in, what I could do is see if maybe she can come up with a presentation on it, we can look forward and do it some more. She's entertaining any questions, I just want to see if there was some interest. I was going to hand that information out.
If y'all are interested, I'd love to have it. Okay? All right, we've got a little bit of information, we can definitely do that.
Mr. Feige, can we go back to summer maintenance a minute?
Sure.
One of the things we didn't talk about this summer?
Yes.
Where are we on this summer?
We're on hold on the sign. One of the things that we're waiting to do is finalize the budget year that we're in, and that will be a discussion of, you know, really what our needs are there, and where we'd like to, if we still would like to move forward with the sign, where we, where will we generate those funds from, whether it be from fund balance, or whether it be something we put in an extra requirement for you.
This time, we'll be meeting into executive session at seven thirty-five P.M. We'll take about a five-minute break, and we can meet in the executive session. The mayor will come out of executive session at ten forty P.M., ten thirty-five. All right, we have a few action items. First, we'll go back to item nine of the agenda. We'll take action on freezing.
I'll make a motion out of that, that we freeze all the non-professional, that's two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, especially.
Motion in the second, on the favor. A motion in the second, on the favor. Although we want to report the appraisal for our superintendent, that he was given an exceptional performance appraisal, and we approve the pay rate for the superintendent. Also, we want to accept the following resignations, Jory McCoy, Maury Sutton, and Melissa Thomas. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to reject the resignation.
Motion in the second, on the favor. The tax of two minutes. Action on that?
Yes.
Evaluation?
No, not the motion, the action on that. No, just accept the resignation. No, 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 no. At least the resignation. Amendment to the marriage.
Then, we have two hires, junior high and high school science teacher.
Heather Smith.
Heather Smith, and elementary teacher.
Whitney doors.
Whitney doors. I have a motion on that.
Make a motion.
All right, we have a second. Take it on the favor. Get a chance. Next is a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second. On the favor, stand up.